Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us this morning. It is August 14th, 2025. My name is Mike Kelly. I am the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners for Johnson County, Kansas. Thank you for coming to today's meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. At this time, it asks the Clerk to start us off by calling the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have everyone present in a full quorum, so thank you all very much for being with us this morning. Would you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As I head to the podium for today's proclamation, would you join me in checking your cellphone, any other noise-making device you may have brought with us today, or with you today, and ensure that it's turned to silent or turned off? We greatly appreciate your cooperation. When we talk about the way we move around Johnson County, obviously, people think about cars or buses, but we have truly taken to the skies. So, we proudly support two airports in Johnson County, and when you look at the impact that those airports have, it's not only economic. We characterize Wichita as the aviation capital of America, but really, it should be Johnson County. We have more airport or airplane moves here than we do in Sedgwick, and so we proudly recognize National Aviation Day in Johnson County. In honor of those pioneers of flight, the innovation of the aviation industry, and the contribution of those that keep us flying safely every day, and the impact that that has for our community. National Aviation Day was established in 1939 by President Franklin D. Roosevelt. It coincides with Orrville Wright's birthday, but it celebrates that sentiment and spirit of exploration and discovery that lifted humanity into the skies here in Johnson County. That legacy lives on from the historic Naval Air Station in Olathe to the vital work happening today at New Century and at Executive Airport. It supports our local economy, it connects our communities, we train future pilots, and we also fuel aviation, or innovation. It's also a source of inspiration for the next generation of dreamers and doers, and we have many of those here in Johnson County. So, on behalf of the county, it's my pleasure to proclaim August 19th as National Aviation Day, and I really do encourage all residents to take a moment and recognize these achievements and to become familiar with the aviation opportunities that exist here in your community. Without further ado, it's my pleasure to introduce Brian Johnson, who's the Executive Director of the Johnson County Airport Commission, as well as Mayor Carol Lehman, Vice Chair of the Johnson County Airport Commission. Thank you both for being here with us this morning. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Commissioners and all the guests here with us and those that are following the live stream. Before I say a few words, I actually wanted to invite Carol Lehman, our Vice Chair of the Johnson County Airport Commission, first to summarize some of the highlights that you've seen over the years at the Airport Commission.
Commissioner, Chairman, glad to be here, and this is a good chance for us to introduce our newest Airport Commissioner, Sam Whitehead. We're glad to have him here, so this is a good day for you to show up, Sam. Thank you. National Aviation Day is an opportunity for us to recognize aviation as a critical driver of Johnson County's economy. Our airports, New Century Air Center and Johnson County Executive, support over 5,000 jobs and contribute more than 1.1 billion annually to the regional economy. Our airports serve as vital hubs for commerce. For example, New Century Air Center is not only an airport, but also a thriving business park, supporting global logistics, aerospace manufacturing, cold storage distribution, and that enhances our regional supply chains. Johnson County Executive Airport is one of the busiest general aviation airports in the state. It supports flight training, recreational aviation, emergency services, and corporate travel, offering convenient and efficient access to our growing community. JCAC continues to modernize its airfields and facilities through FAA and state grants, ensuring safety, sustainability, and long-term operational resilience. Projects like the new air traffic control tower, runway construction, taxiway realignments, and the new hangar development reflect our commitment to strategic growth. Through partnerships with aviation businesses and higher education institutions such as K-State, we are helping to build the next generation of pilots and aerospace professionals, supporting both local job creation and national workforce needs. And as a word from our mayor and gardener, Todd Winters, we thank what goes on out at New Century Air Center, and we thank the employees of New Century Air Center for supporting gardener businesses and restaurants, and thank you for recognizing how important aviation is to Johnson County. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Lehman. That was excellent. I did want to take a minute to thank also the county staff, under Penny's leadership and CMOs. Got a couple of staff members here, Josh and Larry. It's really a team effort, and when you think about the growth over time and the existence of the Airport Commission since the late '60s, it's all of that effort over time that's brought us to this point in time. To what the Chair said about honoring aviation pioneers, truly, that's what we do on this day, and there's a lot to celebrate. When you think about what the Wright Brothers did, it really did pave the way for the entire aviation and aerospace industry. But it's also about celebrating progress. The jet age back in the '50s and to this point in time, the technology, the software, everything that is being used today to transport people, both regionally, nationally, and globally. And let's not forget about AI. AI certainly is a part of our life right now, and it is a strong part of aviation. But lastly, I think most importantly, we need to think about the young people, those young people that are developing skills, again, whether it's in engineering or other professional development, if you will, in that industry. It's those young people that need that cultivating, that need that encouragement and support, to see that vision just as much as the Wright Brothers had, to have that same imagination and desire to move the needle a bit more. So, I'm grateful. Thank you to everyone here that supports the county and our airports within the county. Thank you, Chair. Well, thank you to the entire team from the Johnson County Airport Commission. We'll turn, at this point, to the public comment portion of our agenda. It's an opportunity for those who want to speak on general county issues to do so. We do ask that if you want to speak on an action item on today's agenda, that you register with that action item to speak about its contents. During this general public comment period, if you happen to speak on that action item, we're going to ask that you refrain at this time, instead, address it during the item. When you do come to the dais, we do ask that you state your name and the community in which you reside. The comments are limited to two minutes, and there's a clock on either side of the dais that assists with that time period. If you happen to go beyond the time period, we will ask that you conclude your comments. We do ask that members of the public refrain from remarks that are personally offensive or impertinent or profane or slanderous, and please refrain from the use of offensive or indecorous language that would insult or demean any person. If we stray into that kind of public comment, we will provide a warning. If it continues, we will ask that you step aside from the dais. I believe all of our commenters are in person today, and therefore, we'll call on these commenters in the order that they registered, starting with Donald Stow.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Donald Stow from Overland Park. As homeless continues to rise in Johnson County, as does the cost of housing, with no relief in sight, we still look to this board for some positive action that would benefit hundreds. It is our hope that leaders in this community will be at the Cooling Center, September 1st, at the Overland Park Christian Church, to see firsthand some of the homeless population. I believe there will be a time soon that relief will be seen, hopefully, very soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Pam Randolph.
Good morning, Chairman. I'm Pam Randolph. I'm currently residing in Overland Park. Here are the last storm that we had currently. During the recent storm, we have tried to find shelter to keep from getting wet, and I've had my bed, my back, my sleeping bag, excuse me, wet from the rain, and that was my bed. And it's like five times the business, well, I can't do this. Anyway, let me, I am homeless. During the recent storm, we have tried to find overhead to stay under to keep us dry. Five times now, a business has been very rude, disrespectful to us, to chase us away that we're not allowed to stand under or near their business while it's raining. It tore us, and when we just try to stay dry and keep the only belongings that we have dry. My sleeping bag was completely soaked in water while a battle of sinus infection that I am dealing with. That was my bed. That's all I have to help me sleep. Chairman Carol Kelly and Commissioners, we need your help because we are exhausted and we're very stressed because of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Brian Perkins.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Brian Perkins here. I currently reside in Olathe, Kansas, and I'm homeless. Want to put yourself in our shoes for a moment, okay? I'm going to paint this picture for you. It's a hot day, it's a stormy day, and you're at the library, any library of your choice, and now it's, say, eight o'clock and you have to leave. You go to your tent, and now it's raining. You get to your tent, you realize it's been ransacked, your items are stolen, your only belongings were stolen, and that's all you had. Those are your belongings, and they're gone. That's happened recently to a pretty awesome individual, one that's helped me, actually, just by being who they are. How sad, that it's, again, to this point, that it keeps happening. Another scenario, just wanted to paint a picture. You're waiting at a bus stop. There's no overhang, and the overhang, the closest one's too far away, because when the bus comes, if it does come, you've got to run to get it, and it's kind of like, what do I do? Risk not getting to the bus, or do I stand here in the rain? And you get drenched. Now, you're risking sick, you're getting illness, you're risking a lot. Your only clothes on your back that you're now wearing are drenched. We need to get the homeless off the street. There needs to be something going. Something's got to start. You have Project 1020 here, the only one that keeps going no matter what. The amount of things they have conquered through, obstacles, threats, all of that, they still do it. They're your professionals, we're your professionals, we're your experts. We want to work with you, we're not working against you. We're here every week to work with you. We're your experts, we're your, we are your lived experience advisory board. Let us help you, because we can do it together. I want to, that's why I'm here. I want to. I've been saved, I've been blessed, I'm here because I want to work with you, not work against. Be our leaders, help us build the path together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Galene Van Horn.
Galene Van Horn Lenexa, Chairman, Commissioners. As requested by those on this dais, Mr. Bauer and Mr. Hobart have repeatedly identified specific ways of saving for our 2026 budget, however you prefer to spend your constituents' hard-earned dollars in frivolous ways. Additionally, it seems that you are not listening to us. It is obvious that you fail to realize that you work for us, we do not work for you. You will say that county taxes are only a small portion of our total property tax bill. However, when I add all county, park, and library of the county's portion, it's 24%, nearly one quarter of my total tax bill. I believe that you consider yourselves leaders. Thus, you should lead our cities and schools by reducing spending. You increase spending, and we, your constituents, must find new ways of reducing our budgets. We, your constituents, do not have easy ways of increasing our income. Our employers do not give us salary increases like you give increases to the county employees. Some employees pay $24,000 a year for benefits with high co-pays and minimal matches on 401K plans. Thus, it is no surprise that we have an affordable housing problem. And as a reminder, it has been said that extremists are the ones that are raising the property taxes. That is not true. As you know, I have attended and spoken at these meetings since January of 2023 nearly every week, and I know that failing to control spending, that you here on the dais are the ones actually raising our county taxes. Again and again, nearly without fail, since January of '23, I ask, are you leading this county with your highest degree of integrity, transparency, and spending our money judiciously? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Phil Bauer.
Hi, I'm Phil Bauer. I live in Leewood in the 1st District. And Commissioners and Chair, how many of you up there want to be considered extremists? Show of hands, none of you want to be considered extremists? The reason I ask is that on July 24, just three weeks ago, Chairman Kelly stated that, and I quote, "Extremists have forced property taxes higher and higher." So, if you vote for higher property taxes, you must be an extremist. Don't get labeled as an extremist. Vote no next week on another property tax increase. Thanks.
Thanks. Next is Charlotte O'Hara.
Good morning. I hope that some of you were out early enough to catch the beautiful spectacle of Jupiter and, I'm sorry, Jupiter and Venus hanging in the morning sky. I mean, it's like a pendant, a beautiful diamond pendant hanging in the sky. So, I hope that you go out and take a look at it, because it is glorious. As usual, I'm asking the question, of what value are these books that are described in Moms for Liberty, Parent Guide, of what value are these books to our children? This isn't the freedom to read, this is the freedom to groom our children, and they must be taken out of our libraries, our public libraries and our school libraries. The other thing is, is that, no, yes, what was it, 275,000 people received the good, the good news, bad news, of increase in spending. Let's see, we have Johnson County, 6.448% community college, 3.19%, sorry, Johnson County Park and Rec, 6.484, et cetera, et cetera, and then I got two sets because I have industrial buildings in Olathe, 45-year-old buildings, which, by the way, increased in valuation in 2018 by 61%. Again, your cruel indifference to your constituents is startling. Thank you.
All right. I believe that's all the registered public commentators we have for this morning. So, we will move on to the business session. There are no notes for the record today. We'll start with a consent agenda, and I believe there's a motion to, or a request to amend the consent agenda.
I'm just going to make a motion to...
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, remove items five, six, seven, and eight, please.
Per our rules, one Commissioner can remove items from the consent agenda. Therefore, we will seek a motion for the consent agenda as amended. Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Allenbrand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick, seconded by Commissioner Allenbrand. Would the Clerk please call the roll on the consent agenda as amended?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand.
Allenbrand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye, we have seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
All right. Then we'll move on to item five, which was removed from the consent agenda. It's Resolution Number 016X25, which appoints the 4th District's nominee, Dr. Michael Penethieri, to the Board of Code Review. Commissioner Ashcraft, would you like to discuss the item?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, my question for number five is the same for all four. Actually, I have two questions. I'm just trying to verify if all these appointments are related to the reorganizations that have been going on with the boards and commissions, boards and committees and commissions, or if it includes new appointees. And the second question, Mr. Chairman, if you recall, we had a similar discussion about three weeks ago, and I had asked if my appointees could be moved to agenda review before they were placed on consent, and the county attorney at that time advised me that, per our rules, that could not be done, so I withdrew that request. But, Mr. Chairman, I was looking at these briefings... at these briefing sheets this week, and all four of them, I believe, indicate that, and if I may read, this nomination may be included on the consent agenda. So I just was wondering if I could get some clarification. Is this optional, or is it required? Because the rules seem to indicate it's required, but the briefing sheet seems to suggest it's optional.
Well, it'd be my analysis that the rules trump the briefing sheet. The rules say shall, and therefore, the rules that we voted upon and approved by majority, understanding you weren't in the majority on that, be that as it may, the rules do say shall.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would agree with that, and I do acknowledge I was not in the majority. I would then maybe suggest that we modify the briefing sheets to reflect the rules that have been adopted.
So noted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Myers.
So, asking legal, can the information that Mr. Ashcraft's looking for in his first question, can that happen prior to this meeting?
Yes, it can, and I think it should be happening prior to this meeting. So you understand if it's pursuant to the reorganization, or simply a reappointment, or new appointment.
All right. Commissioner Brewer.
I'll just verify. I know for number seven, when that went out, that it did state who was a replacement, who was filling a vacancy, and who was a reappointment.
No, all this information is within our possession. So is there a motion on number five?
I'm happy to make the motion. I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve resolution number 106-25, appointing Fourth District Commissioner nominee, Mr. Michael A. Penethery?
Peneteer.
Am I close?
Peneteer.
I'm sorry. As the chairman stated, PhD, PE, to the Board of Code Review.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Ashcraft and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Seeing no further discussion on the topic, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye, seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Then we'll move on. The resolution's adopted, and we'll move on to resolution number 10725, which is declaring a vacancy of the First District Commissioners appointee and appointing First District Commissioners nominee, Dr. Richard Hellman, to the Johnson County Commission on Aging Advisory Board. Mr. Ashcraft, further inquiry?
The same question, if this individual was a new appointee, or is just part of the reorganization effort.
Okay. I believe we circulated that information. So if there's not further inquiry, is there a motion on number six?
Do you want to make that motion?
Commissioner Ashcraft.
I can make the motion. I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve resolution number 107-25, declaring a vacancy of the First District Commissioners appointee and appointing First District Commissioner nominee, Richard Hellman, M.D., to the Johnson County Commission on Aging Advisory Board.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Ashcraft and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. Seeing no further questions, would the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye, seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. On to number seven, which is resolution number 10825, appointing the Third District Commissioners nominees, Scott Ballantyne, Dennis Bolan, and Fred Winger, to the East Consolidated Zoning Board. Further inquiry, Commissioner Ashcraft?
No, Mr. Chairman, just the same question, if this is a reorganization, reappointments, or new appointments, new appointments within the boards.
Commissioner Brewer, do you care to educate him?
Sure. As we sent out, Ballantyne is a replacement for an expired term, Dennis Bolan is filling a vacancy that already existed, and Fred Winger is a reappointment. And when we're ready, I'm happy to make the motion.
Seeing no further questions, why don't you go ahead? Thank you.
Resolution number 10, sorry, resolution number 108-25, consider approving resolution number 108-25, appointing the Third District Commissioners nominees, Scott Ballantyne, Dennis Bolan, and Fred Winger, to the East Consolidated Zoning Board.
Allen Brand, second.
So moved by Commissioner Brewer and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. I'm not seeing further questions, so I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye, again, seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. And on to resolution number 109-25. It appoints the Sixth District Commission nominee, Courtney Craig, and my nominee, Jean Hughes, to the Johnson County Museum Advisory Council. I'll note that Ms. Hughes is a reappointment.
I will note, I'm assuming this is your question, Commissioner Ashcraft, that Courtney Craig is a reappointment, and she did go through the process, and we all received that. So if you're okay with it, I'll go ahead and read the motion.
Please.
I move that the Board of County Commissioners approve resolution number 109-25, appointing the Sixth District Commissioner nominee, Courtney Craig, to the Johnson County Museum Advisory Council. I missed something. Isn't there another name?
The chair's.
Jean Hughes.
Jean Hughes.
The chair's nominee. Well, that is really, either I've got a wrong briefing sheet, but it says it at the top under, but it doesn't have it in the motion. Ms. Durnum, can you look at that? Am I missing something? I'm looking at that now, and I believe you are correct. Could you go ahead and use for the motion, add to what's on the issue above that, that says, and the chair's nominee, Jean Hughes, to the Johnson County Museum Advisory Council? And the chair's nominee, Jean Hughes, to the Johnson County Museum Advisory Council.
Hanslick, second.
Moved by Commissioner Allen Brand and seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Seeing no further questions, would the clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have seven in favor, none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. So at this time, we'll move on to the action agenda. We'll start with item number nine. And this is consideration of a contract amendment that would separate the electronic health record system from the Johnson County Community Development Disabilities Organization from the JCDS direct service provision. Chris Laney is here to present the item. I appreciate the conversation that we had at Agenda Review. Thank you very much for that. As we have seen at several JCDS meetings over the last few years, the necessity of separation due to state regulations and conflict of interest is upon us, and therefore, separating these systems won't change their functionality, but puts us closer to the inevitable compliance that'll be necessary for that conflict of interest. So thanks again for that education on that topic. Anything further you wanted to provide on this item as we consider it?
At this point, nothing. The discussion would just like to summarize that no county dollars will be used in this project, and prior to reaching your attention, this item was reviewed and approved by the Johnson County Developmental Sports Governing Board.
Thank you very much, sir.
And for further questions.
Questions or comments on this item, or a motion? Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move to authorize an amendment to contract 2019, or 2019, it's not a year, I guess, dash 030 for electronic health records, EHR services provided by Wellennet, Wellenjet?
Welligen.
Welligen, to establish a separate, excuse me, instance of the current system of the Johnson County Community Development Disabilities Organization, CDDO, authorize the reallocation and expenditure of the Developmental Supports Fund balance reserves for fiscal year 2025 in an amount not to exceed $250,000, and to delegate authority to the JCDS Governing Board to manage this contract within the approved budget and policy parameters.
Allen Brand, second.
So moved by Commissioner Ashcraft and seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. I'm not seeing further discussion or questions from the board at this time, and therefore, I'd ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. There are seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Laney. We'll move on at this time to item number 10. This is consideration for approval for the conditional award of HomeARP parental housing. We have heard a presentation during our last Agenda Review on the capacity building funding for Metro Lutheran Ministries, which would authorize reallocation expenditure from the general fund. Heather McNeve, we had a great discussion on this during our Agenda Review. Would there be anything further you'd like us to consider before we address the item?
Good morning. Now, Heather McNeve, Housing Services Director, no new information, just a statement that Metro is ready to get started. We're holding them back, they're raring to go, and they're very open to partnerships and other ideas, so we're ready.
Very good. Well, Ms. McNeve, thank you very much. I'm going to ask that you step aside. There are a couple of public comments on this item, so I'd ask the clerk to help us prepare to receive those public comments.
Very good.
Very good. So at this time, we'll hear from Deanne Hepthis.
My name is Deanne Hepthis, and I live in Olathe. I'm a co-chair of the Affordable Housing Team of the Good Faith Network. The Good Faith Network fully supports approval of this item. This investment represents both a strategic and compassionate use of federal resources, directing them to meet the needs of a population that is often the most complex to house and the least well-served by existing systems. The qualifying populations identified under the HomeARP framework, people experiencing homelessness, those at risk of homelessness face extraordinary barriers to stable housing. These barriers are not simply a matter of affordability. They include the compounding effects of trauma, untreated health conditions, lack of access to supportive services, and deep structural inequities in the housing market. Too often, such households remain invisible in traditional housing programs, or they're screened out by eligibility requirements such as credit checks and rental history criteria. Metropolitan Lutheran Ministries' proposal to create up to 16 units of supporting housing demonstrates that there are housing developers in Johnson County who are able to take on these hardest challenges. They can do so when there is funding available that makes the project possible. It acknowledges that the path to solving homelessness and severe housing instability requires targeted, supportive, and sustained interventions for those on the margins. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Jennifer Levinson.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Sabner Levinson. I reside in Overland Park. I'm a member of the Housing Steering Committee of the Good Faith Network. One thing the Good Faith Network really appreciates about this item is the process used to arrive at recommending MLM project to you. Even though these HomeARP dollars are one-time and come with restrictions, the county has used them in the same smart, careful way the best housing trust funds do. As we all know, a housing trust fund is money set aside to meet urgent housing needs through a competitive process. We don't yet have a housing trust fund in Johnson County, but this allocation process shows us how this would work. In this case, the county-appointed committee put out a public call for proposals, received an application, reviewed it in detail, scored it using clear criteria, and recommended approval of the request because it met some prioritized needs in our community. When scoring the proposals, the community looked at the group's ability to carry out the project, the affordable, how affordable the housing would be, whether it would serve the people, HomeARP is meant to help, and how well it could bring in other funding. And finally, the committee brought their recommendation to the Board for final approval. Your approval of this not only helps people today, it shows how Johnson County can build a stronger housing future for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Neil Heckman.
I am Neil Heckman, and I live in Olathe. I'm a member of the Housing Steering Committee of the Good Faith Network. From a systems perspective, the measured competitive application process for these dollars does two things. First, it makes sure this one-time money is spent in a smart, strategic way, not quickly or reactively. Secondly, it builds the skills and systems that the county needs to manage a permanent affordable housing trust fund in the future. This process shows that Johnson County can use competitive housing dollars openly and effectively, laying the groundwork for dedicated housing funds in the years ahead. And the need for this kind of targeted investment is urgent. The data clearly shows that the number of households experiencing homelessness in Johnson County is rising, and their situations are becoming more complex. For many, market-rate housing, even with a voucher, is out of reach. Without projects like the one proposed here, these neighbors remain stuck, moving between shelters, hospital emergency rooms, the street, and sometimes even jail, a cycle that is both inhumane and highly costly to the taxpayers of Johnson County. Approving this proposal is the right thing to do for our most vulnerable neighbors, and a smart investment in our housing future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Renee Loyah.
Good morning. My name is Renee Loyah, and I live in Lenexa. I am a member of the Good Faith Network's Executive Board. In October 2024, the Good Faith Network urged the commission to allocate the remaining FRF funds through a competitive grant process with the Johnson County Housing Authority. We believed then, as we do now, that a deliberative process with clear scoring criteria and careful vetting would ensure the best projects rise to the top, and one-time dollars have a lasting impact. At the time, one commissioner called allocating funding through housing development capital contribution grants from the Johnson County Housing Authority frittering the money away. And the commission chose to make decisions themselves from the dais that day. Today's approach stands in stark contrast. The Director of Housing Services is bringing you a proposal that frittered nothing. Instead, it followed the strongest possible process: public call for proposals, rigorous scoring, and a recommendation based on a capacity, readiness, and service to those most in need. As Johnson County told HUD in 2025 in its consolidated plan, there is insufficient housing for extremely low and low-income families, and it is not likely to change unless dedicated funding becomes available specifically for building more affordable housing options. This proposal is exactly that kind of strategic investment. This is how public dollars should be managed, with deliberation by experts, accountability, and strategic focus on the people who need it most. Johnson County would be well-served to make this approach permanent by creating a dedicated, ongoing source of housing funds that can be awarded through the same fair competitive process year after year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Rita Carr.
Good morning. My name is Rita Carr. I'm the Director of Community Planning with United Community Services. We are the lead agency for the Johnson County Continuum of Care on Homelessness. I wanted to come speak in favor of the HomeARP plan. We cannot lose sight of the need for shelter, but affordable housing projects like the one being proposed would make an incredible difference to Johnson Countyans who have lost their housing. Many of the people on our by-name list have been unhoused for months, because while many have some amount of income, there are very few places they can afford to rent, even when they have rent assistance programs helping them with those for several months. I just wanted to take a moment to share who we're talking about. The people on that list that we're talking about, 42 percent of the households have we're talking about, 42% of the households have one or more disabilities. 35% of the households are families with children. 33% of the households have a significant mental health need, where housing paired with case management support makes all the difference in keeping them housed. And 14%, and I would say a growing portion of that population, are older adults aged 62-plus. There are many different causes of homelessness, and so many of our neighbors are one financial emergency from losing housing. There are many times where people are pulled off of the list, and they are housing-searching for months, and they end up being returned to that list unhoused because there is just nowhere that they can find to rent to them. Every unit of affordable housing makes a huge difference towards resolving homelessness in our county. This problem is solvable if we support these solutions.
Thank you, Ms. Carr. And thank you to all the public commenters on the item. I believe that's all of them, correct? All right, thank you. So I'll invite Ms. McNeve back for the conversation and deliberation by the board. Ms. McNeve, I appreciate the work that you and your team went through in this process, and additionally, understanding that the Home ARP program carries challenges with it, finding a good partner to be able to expedite the utilization of these funds while in advance of the federal expiration of these funds. As part of this suggested motion we have today, it is to delegate authority to the Director of Planning Housing Committee Development to execute agreements. We're not looking at direct agreements in front of us here today. If there's a note that I could provide in the process is that time is of the essence, not only from the people that we've heard from today, but because of the potential challenges that we're seeing with changes to federal allocation of funding. So while I appreciate in our conversation during Agenda Review last week, we looked at timelines that, at the longest extent, could look like two and a half years before folks are actually housed using these funds. I would greatly express at least my desire, and, you know, the board can express theirs, that we put in different safeguards, that we put in more exigency to the process so that if beyond their capabilities, Metro Lutheran Ministries is not able to secure this housing in a more exigent fashion, that we be able to return to the table and find a partner that can, because we deserve to get this housing online as quickly as possible. Commissioner Hanslick?
Thank you. Unfortunately, because of a family emergency, I wasn't able to be here for the Agenda Review last week, but I did meet with Ms. McNeve. And a couple of things, and this relates to what the chair said, that this funding is just the beginning. It's just part of what's going to be needed to make this project a reality. And so, we still have a lot of challenges ahead, including our good old NIMBY, not-in-my-backyard issues, affordable, affordable buildings and houses, because as I understand from our conversation, the easiest way is to find something existing that's for sale and renovative necessary. And that's hard to do, really hard to do. So, so money is part of the need, but there are many other things that need to fall into place to make this project a success. And as the chair said, it's not going to happen tomorrow. There's not going to be housing tomorrow. And so I appreciate that. And I also appreciate one of the things you and I talked about, that if, if the money cannot, if it appears the money cannot all be used by 2030, that it could be moved over into the Supportive Services Fund to be, continue to be used. So, it sounds like regardless, we have a way to use that money, although I agree with the chair about making sure we're moving as long as, as fast as we can, but there are some things that are just out of our control. So, I appreciate that information, and of course, I'm very supportive of this. One thing I would mention too, because we've heard some, some remarks about the competitiveness and of the process, there was only one applicant, correct?
That's correct.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
We'll go with Commissioner Brewer, then Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I know, Ms. McNeve, you've been very busy in the last two weeks, meeting with a lot of commissioners, so I want to thank you for your time. I, too, was one of those who, who met with you subsequent to a very robust discussion during Agenda Review last week on this project. And I also want to share my thanks with Mr. Cooper and Ms. Portras from the Metro Lutheran Ministry who also met. I wanted just to reflect on some of our discussion. I think there was a theme. I think we all have a sense of wanting to make sure that the dollars are obligated and expended within the timeline for the manner to which they have been directed, and that there's a Plan B if we find that as we move forward with property acquisition, renovation, and leasing up with our partner, that there's some holdup, that there's still ways to expend the dollars as effectively as possible. I was very pleased to chat with Metro Lutheran Ministry in that meeting about their openness to collaboration and partnership, to make sure that we have the best team to help with site selection, to help with securing locations, securing renovation, and, and acting as effectively and, and efficiency, efficiently as possible, and having them reflect on some of their expertise with the Visino Group in Wyandotte County around Elaine's Place. And importantly, we know today that there is a limit to the number of housing choice vouchers that Johnson County is qualifying for, even though the demand far outpaces the number of vouchers. Even within that landscape, we know today that there's a number of housing choice vouchers where lease-up is really hard because of cost barriers. So, it's heartening the conversation about the intentionality between Metro Lutheran Ministry and the Housing Authority to review where we're having difficulty in leasing folks up and what that population looks like, so we can be intentional in the types of properties we secure to make sure they're meeting the needs of the priority population we identify and those who are having the highest barrier to housing. I will just make a statement. A housing continuum, as we know, is incomplete if we don't have adequate shelter and transitional housing solutions. The ultimate solution to, to those experiencing homelessness is to have adequate housing, but that we cannot ignore the fact that a housing continuum includes shelter and transitional housing. And we collectively, as a community, have to continue to work to that need because that's meeting the need of our most vulnerable population. So, I'm excited about this. This gets us further along, but I do need to acknowledge that a housing continuum is incomplete without adequate shelter and transitional housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Chair. Well, first of all, Mrs. McNeve, I didn't call you to meet with you because you're, I know, and I want you to know, it's because you are so thorough, and you are so well-educated and trained in your leadership, and I can go on and on, so I won't, I won't make you have a big head, but you do. You are very good at what you do, so I really appreciate that, and I felt like it was all covered. I'm going to echo the chair's comment, because I know you have it under control, but I'm going to echo it anyway. And I do want people to know, the city of Olathe, the city of Edgerton, the city of Gardner, and DeSoto have done an analysis of housing studies. So, there are more things to come. And with Driven Development Trust, as those funds come rolling out, there's more to come yet. So, I, I don't want people to think that everybody's just sitting around. It just takes a process, as you well know. So, I appreciate everything you do, and if somebody doesn't have a motion, I'd be more than happy to make it.
Very good. Very good. We can come back to you for that. Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I'll start by saying I'm going to support this, but I have a couple of observations if I could. Mr. Chairman, to your comments, your concerns are, I think, an interesting notion, and I think have some validity in terms of how this will play out. And along those lines, I don't have really any concerns about Metro Lutheran. This is going to be a stretch. I think you recognize this. Staff has attested that your bona fides make you as well-prepared for this effort, and it's not going to be easy. So, I do wish you well there. But a couple of things have come up. I think at least one of the speakers raised this issue. So, Ms. McNeve, this will help approximately 16 family units.
Correct.
What is the need in Johnson County conservatively?
Sure. The need is huge. I can tell you that. Our estimate is about 7,500 units of affordable housing are needed for the lowest-income population in our community, and that is probably on the lower end.
Very good. So, this, this is an important step, a valid step, but it goes nowhere near the expectation that Ms. McNeve has expressed. And I would suggest that while additional resources will help, if it's, if it's $2.5 million for 16 families to do 7,500 families, that's a pretty big number, okay? And, and I think other strategies need to be in play. And, and that kind of takes me to my final point, and Commissioner Brewer, I think, touched upon this. The question is the continuum of care, and I just am wondering, do we have what I would call a housing czar in Johnson County that looks at the various components to make sure that they are integrated and that we're maximizing the use of limited resources? And, and who is that? And I know you're working on a strategic plan, but is that you? And I'm not trying to put you on the spot, and, and I know we've talked, and there's a gentleman sitting behind you. Is it him? I mean, because this is not a, these pieces are fine, but 16 for $3 million, 7,500 would be, I mean, it's, it's a big number. But that, and that's a conservative estimate. So, who, who are we looking to, to help make sure that we are using those limited resources as effectively as possible to address the issue as deeply and as broadly as possible?
Well, thank you for that. I think it is going to take a community-wide effort. I think the county has a part to play, but it's also going to involve the Continuum of Care, Good Faith Network partners. It's going to take a lot. Did you want to speak to your role?
Is this, is this Czar Adams?
Czar Adams.
Yeah, definitely not the czar, but I am kind of the designated leader for the efforts across the, for the county organization. So, yeah, that's my responsibility. You know, in the, in a couple of weeks, you'll hear an update on, on our efforts in the housing world and how we're leveraging the dollars that we get to, to maximize the impact in the, in the community. But Heather's spot-on that this isn't just the county. It's not just the cities. It's, it's a community-wide effort that requires, requires everybody working in similar directions to, to make it work, because the need is great.
One quick follow-on. Well, Mr. Adams, I'm not making, I'm not making light of your, your title, but do you see your role as the master coordinator, facilitator for Continuum of Care in this area, or is there someone else that should be or could be in that role?
Well, I think it makes sense for a leadership role out of the county manager's office, but there's a team of, of people that work on this every day. Heather's one of those people. Jay's part of that group. Megan Foreman is part of that group. There are people in our, in our Health Department that are part of that, so it's, it's a, it's a great cross-section of individuals. Our Emergency Services is part of that group. So, it's, it's a county-wide lift.
And I apologize. It's Mr. Norris, not Mr. Adams. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Myers?
Thank you, Chair. Well, I think we all know that housing is a daunting task. And, Ms. McNeve, I really appreciate all the work that you've done on this item, along with other members of the team, because it is a teamwork, and, and it's upon all of us to do what we can to keep moving the ball forward. And I think the public sees, we do continue to move the ball forward. Many times, I have to tell people in government, government doesn't sprint. It crawls. And, and it's because we try to do things that are done in the correct way, and of course, you have to take so many factors in to, to make sure that you're making proper decisions. And I'm fully supportive of this item, and I've agreed with so many of the comments up here on this dais, on this item. And I do believe we are continuing to move the ball forward, and I think we'll be seeing more of that, as Commissioner Allen Brand pointed out, in the future.
Thank you. Commissioner Brewer?
Just two comments. One, a little bit reflective on some of the questions that Commissioner Ashcraft was asking. In, in my mind, we do have that leading force. And that leading force, if memory serves, was, was really codified almost more than 25 years ago with the formation of the Continuum of Care on Homelessness for Johnson County by resolution by the board at that time of county commissioners to identify a, kind of a backbone organization, which was United Community Services of Johnson County, to facilitate, and for the first time, to formally go after federal dollars to specifically address homelessness. I think today, and certainly I invite Ms. Carr to come back up if I quote any facts wrong, but I think today, there's over 75 participating agencies and entities around the Continuum of Care of homelessness, on homelessness that represents our cities, our agencies, our school districts, our county, our public safety, our healthcare, our mental health care, and our faith communities. I think that is the organization that provides the structure, the expertise, the knowledge, and the data to help lead an effort of collaboration to better results. And just as a side note, because I can't help myself, earlier today, we had some public comments about voices who are lived experience. There is a lived experience council of the Continuum of Care on Homelessness, and I invite, since we have some members of our community experiencing homelessness, who have been wonderful advocates and voice in that space, to make sure they're connecting with United Community Services of Johnson County as the facilitator, because I know during my time, finding voices who were lived experience was an important priority to make sure we fully populated that, that council as a component of the work that was being done. So, I'm done matchmaking, and I'll step back now.
Very good. Commissioner Hanslick?
Thank you. I appreciate Commissioner Brewer's remarks, because that's, I used to be a member of the Continuum of Care, and anyone is, is able to attend. It's a public meeting, and the energy and the innovations and the hard work of the folks in that group are, are amazing. They're the boots on the ground. So, thank you for, for saying that. I wanted to just go back to the, the, ask if you could just talk a little bit about the Home ARP funds, because my understanding is, we will never get these again, probably. They're, they were a one-time fund, and they're very, very specific. In fact, you and I talked about how difficult it is to find eligible projects to use these funds for. And to Commissioner Ashcraft's comment about, you know, 16 units for $3 million, that's actually pretty good. And, but we, we, we can't use it for, for certain other things. So, maybe you could just very briefly discuss how we came to have these funds and, and how they're, how they're limited.
Absolutely. So, the Home ARP award is a special version of the Home Investment Partnerships Program grant. We're a participating jurisdiction for that grant, and it's specific to affordable housing. And during COVID, out of the American And during COVID, out of the American Rescue Plan Act, they allocated these special funds to serve this very special population, the homeless, at-risk, DV survivors, and other at-risk populations. We're very limited in what we can do with these funds. We only have certain eligible activities. This rental housing activity, I think, is going to be the most bang for our buck, because it is, you know, the per-unit subsidy is about $150,000, but over the 15 years, it's about $10,000 a year, which is actually a pretty good deal. The other eligible activity is supportive services, which we're going to use primarily for rent assistance. And I'll be back on the 28th to discuss that in more detail.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And just one other thing. I wanted to emphasize again, I feel like we can't emphasize it enough. Money alone will not solve this issue. It's going to take community buy-in. It's going to take... You know, I was sitting here making some notes about how important location is. The least expensive property is where there are no services. So in order to actually help people, we have to have locations near transit and services and jobs. So it's a huge task, but it's going to take more than just dollars. And so I appreciate that we have a challenge ahead of us. So thank you for being willing to take it on.
Absolutely.
Commissioner Allenbrand, if you'd like to make the motion now.
Thank you, Chair. I move to approve the conditional award of Home ARPA rental housing operating and capacity of building federal grant funds in the amount of $2,686,777.26. Did I say that right?
Yes.
Okay. To Metro Lutheran Ministry authorizing reallocation and expenditure of general fund balance of reserves for FY 2025 in the amount not to exceed $2,686,778 and delegate authority to execute agreements with MLM to the Director of Planning, Housing, and Community Development.
Myers, second. Moved by Commissioner Allenbrand and seconded by Commissioner Myers. Not seeing any further questions or comments at this time. I'd ask the clerk to call the roll. Thank you.
Commissioner Faust?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer?
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
Chairman Kelly?
Aye, seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Thank you very much, Ms. McNeve. We'll move on at this time to item 11. And this is consideration of a contract with Icon Structures, Inc. for the New Century Adult Detention Interior Improvements. Kyle Heltney from Facilities back with us to discuss the item. Thank you for your presentation at Agenda Review. Anything further you wanted to provide to us at this time before we consider the item?
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Kyle Heltney with Facilities Management. I have no new additional information to share. I just would note that Corey Smith is here to answer any questions also that you may have.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions, comments, concerns? Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity to visit with Mr. Hilty... Hiltony?
Heltney.
Heltney.
Yes.
Excuse me. I'm having trouble with names today. I apologize. Yesterday, as well as Deputy Smith. And initially, I had a concern about the bidding process. The briefing sheet divides the table, but I was trying to understand the apparent low bid was not a responsive bid. And received an explanation from the purchasing director, purchasing agent. And I understand the rationale. There evidently was a clerical error in the document. One document was submitted twice, and a necessary document was not submitted at all. And therefore, they were disqualified. I was just going to make the observation. I would encourage staff to look at their rules. There are... Have been chances in the past for minor technical clerical errors to be excused. This type of error evidently was not. I would just encourage staff to consider that in the future, because it's about $370,000 difference. So but I'm not objecting. I understand those are the rules, and we will live by them. The other issue, though, Mr. Chairman, was I was wondering if staff could elaborate on the proposed efficiencies that this $1.9 million investment will demonstrate for us.
Sure. I'm going to ask Corey Smith to come up and speak to those as they pertain to the sheriff's operations.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman. Corey Smith, Lieutenant, Sheriff's Office. This... Currently, our video courtroom is limited to a number of video rooms. We've seen the demand of video court appearances rise relating to COVID. We went from back in 2017, 2018 to less than 3,000 visits on average to now we're in the 8,000s, almost 9,000, video court appearances. And that's just at our New Century facility. And while this project, it certainly helps us meet the demands with limitations on the video rooms to get through the dockets, helps with the acoustics. We're limited in our facilities now. Nothing's changed, but we see a giant increased demand for video appearances. The project specifically helps us meet those demands more effectively and efficiently. Speaking to video court versus in-person court, we see the numbers increase there. And certainly, appearances by video help us mitigate safety concerns. And also, that is a huge efficiency and cost savings to do it through video versus in-person hearings. And so the more video court appearances we have, the more savings there are in that regard.
Go ahead with your follow-up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one follow-on. And I refer to you as deputy. I didn't mean to insult you, Lieutenant. I'm having trouble with names and titles, so forgive me. But can you elaborate in terms of the efficiencies? I hear there's a safety component, and I'm sure that's very valuable. But are there operational efficiencies?
Yes, there are some. So we are limited in the seating that we have in our video court facility currently. So we can only pull so many people at a time to sit in there. We've increased that. We're limited by the number of... This will triple the amount of video rooms we have. So where they may want to have a certain number of people on a docket or a court list to see, we may have to pull them in multiple groups, because we can't facilitate the seating and the video courts all at one time. So we may take a group back and then bring another group down in order to get through all those appearances, where this should allow us to bring them all in one group, and it saves staff time.
So did you estimate any break-even point in terms of the cost and benefits?
I don't have any analysis in savings for this particular project, other than we ran some costs for video court as a whole versus in-person savings.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
I would think travel costs would be another efficiency.
Yes, sir. There's... There would be... The biggest cost would be staff hours, labor wages. But yeah, you would certainly have transportation costs, wear and tear on vehicles, and those things. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Brewer?
Thank you. And thank you for providing a little bit more detail. So both last week in Agenda Review and today, I'm hearing that it provides stronger safety, you know, saves dollars around travel time and other staff capacities. But also, I keep on hearing, and one of the priorities for me is helping not be a part of the backlog, right, of clearing a docket and making sure that we're able to move hearings and other functions of the court as efficiently as possible. The court has a role in that. So do our practices and procedures on the corrections side. What I'm hearing, and I'm just looking for an affirmation, that increasing this capacity allows for us to kind of meet the courts as far as having a speedy docket as possible and not having a backlog.
Yes, ma'am. This will certainly increase our capacity to conduct more courts for both municipal and district courts. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Hanslick?
Oh, thank you. And I apologize if this was discussed last week, but I'm assuming this is the same project that came before us a couple of years ago. And I think it had a price tag of about $8 million. And so hats off to Facilities for bringing it down to 1.9 as opposed to 8. So thank you. I just want to confirm it was the same project.
Absolutely.
Yes, this is Kyle Heltney with Facilities Management. And yes, this is the same project that you are referencing that started roughly around $8 million. And in partnership and working collaboratively with the sheriff's office, we've been able to find savings and efficiencies and continue to meet their operational need and improve their operational need around video courts.
Amazing what can happen when we work together, right? Commissioner Allenbrand?
Thank you, Chair. I was going to say the same thing. It's amazing when you collaborate together and you work as partners, how much money you can save. And I'm not going to go over everything that we've already went over, because it's just common sense with what you're doing. And I appreciate all the work that you've done. And if you're ready, Chair, I have a motion.
I'm going to go to Commissioner Faust first, but we'll come back to you for the motion.
Yes. I serve on CJAC, and one of the issues that's been brought up by one or two attorneys is the lack of space in our jail to meet privately with people they're representing. And so will this allow more private conversations so the attorney can meet?
These are more specific to court appearances, and we have the availability for them to meet with clients professionally through our tablet system. But if they come in person, this doesn't help in providing that space necessarily for them...
Well, it's a real issue. And this attorney, longtime defense attorney, and I would encourage, and I'll hook you up, but this person's been bringing it up a number of times. And you have to meet one-on-one with the people you represent with paperwork and so forth. You can't just meet through a tablet.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Allenbrand, have a thought motion?
Thank you, Chair. I move to authorize a contract with Icon Structures, Inc. for the New Century Adult Detention Center Interior Improvements Project located at 27745 West 159th Street, New Century, Kansas, 66031, in the amount not to exceed $1,898,000 per IFB number 2025-024.
Hanslick, second.
Moved by Commissioner Allenbrand, seconded by Commissioner Hanslick. Commissioner Ashcraft with further discussion.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I've struggled with this one, but I want to thank Commissioner Hanslick for reminding us that the original proposal was over four times what's being presented. And so I commend staff for... The sheriff's staff as well as Facility staff for reworking this. I struggle, though, because we talk about what I would consider cost shifting, using staff in different ways rather than cost savings. Because we're not going to actually reduce staff, but we are going to improve safety. And I'm reflecting on this, Lieutenant Smith, because I value that, and I understand the environment in which you live, and that's an important consideration and want to be supportive of it. So I'm going to bite my hesitancy and be supportive of this.
Commissioner Brewer?
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Ashcraft, I would maybe stipulate efficient use of staff time could be a cost savings in the sense that, to my knowledge, in years past, we have... This... At the dais commissioners at that time have grappled with the high amount of overtime hours coming out of the sheriff's department and how that's impacted the budget. And so hopefully, as we think of ways, and the sheriff's office comes along besides us, of thinking of ways of being more efficient with the valuable time and resources of our staff, that that could result in things like a savings in overtime. That would be just an observation.
Go ahead, Commissioner Ashcraft.
Well, and that's a fair point, Commissioner Brewer. The operative word, though, is hopefully. I think a case could be made. I just did not see the analytics and would encourage staff to provide that.
Nope. Okay. I was looking beyond you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
A motion.
Well...
I already did.
It's been made and seconded. And I'll say, just to the point, since I haven't addressed the item yet, is that, yes, operational efficiencies and cost savings are great, but also safety of those on the front lines. We take that seriously here. And so that in and of itself is justification for me. There is added benefit, too, but know how important we recognize that is. With that, we'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Commissioner Faust?
Aye.
Commissioner Myers?
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer?
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick?
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Yes.
Commissioner Allenbrand?
Allenbrand, aye.
Chairman Kelly?
Aye, seven in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We'll move on at this time to item number 12. This is the authorization of a contract with Midwest Presentations, Inc. for audiovisual equipment and services for the Commission Board and Control Room. Bill Nixon back with us to discuss the item. Mr. Nixon, thanks very much for your presentation last week on Agenda Review. Anything further you wanted to provide before consideration?
Just given the discussion last week, I wanted to make a comment about the use of the term informal for the RFP process. And I appreciated the discussion with Commissioner Ashcraft about that. I didn't mean to imply that we didn't follow any of the processes or policies. That informal process we did was to ensure that we were getting the best price using the competitive cooperative agreements that are already existing. So I didn't want to... I wanted to address that, given the discussion last week.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Nixon. I appreciate that. I'm supportive of this item. I understand that it can be... Or that there are some who can be critical of supporting audio and visual equipment, especially in the boardroom. But I think it's incredibly important that we have an opportunity to make sure that our meetings are recorded, that they are accessible to everybody within Johnson County. And I really appreciate that the technology that we are potentially purchasing here would be portable if necessary. So with all those considerations, I'm supportive of the endeavor. Commissioner Allenbrand?
Thank you, Chair. And I'm going to echo what he's saying, because I have the privilege of sitting here on the end. You know, people have been very critical. I've heard ridicule going towards Megan and April, just on how you sign in, which makes it more thorough, and your staff as well. And to have updated and spend the money to have updated equipment so everybody can hear what's going on is critical. And I felt like your information was very detailed, and I appreciate that you're looking also into the future, because I also hear criticism when we're in the lower levels because of internet connection and people can't hear, including, I'm going to say, myself sometimes here on the dais. So it's easier to be here to hear what's going on than downstairs. So you are always... You and your team are always looking into the future. So thank you for the detailed information.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that, yes, this is an enhancement. But I also look at it from my tenure on this dais. For several years, we have struggled with how communications work, the technicality of it. And I appreciated Mr. Nixon's due diligence to try to walk through all the particulars. I hope his list here is substantive. And if it's not comprehensive, that it has some of the, what I would call nominal bells and whistles to help make sure that meeting management is as effective and efficient for the chair as it could be. Because over the years, I know, trying to watch back and forth, who has spoken, what order, can be problematic and things can get missed. So I'm supportive of this, and I hope it works at least 10 times better than what we have now. Otherwise, Mr. Nixon will be back looking for more.
Commissioner Brewer?
Just two comments. One, just to underscore, the process, as I recall from Agenda Review conversation last week, is how you come up with your menu of possible companies you can work with. can work with. Started with a request for qualifications. That's how you have that, which is a process that you understand what companies, and in this case locally, can specifically provide you the types of services that you need. So, when you go out for bid on a specific type of needs such as this, and that's what makes that process a little bit more informal because you're not doing, throwing quite as wide a net. Is that accurate?
Correct.
And I'll just speak, I, and I know I'm not alone at the dais, as somebody who has a hearing loss, who's been both up at the dais and in the audience, it is important that we're meeting the needs of all our different residents and hopefully maximizing that we can meet them where they're at, because important business gets lost if you cannot hear it. So, thank you.
Right. No further questions on this one that I can see. A motion. Commissioner Hanslick.
I move to authorize a contract with Midwest Presentations, Inc. doing business as CCS Presentation Systems KC for the purchase of audiovisual equipment and services for the Johnson County Commission Board and Control Room in the amount of $434,708.58 per State of Kansas contract 57375.
Allen Brand, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hanslick, seconded by Commissioner Allen Brand. No further questions or comments. Will the clerk call the roll, please?
Commissioner Fast.
Aye.
Commissioner Myers.
Myers, aye.
Commissioner Brewer.
Brewer, aye.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Hanslick, aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Allen Brand, aye.
Chairman Kelly.
Aye. We have seven votes in favor and none against. Is that consistent with your count?
It is.
Very good. Thank you very much, Mr. Nixon. I believe that's all the action items we have today on both the consent and action agenda. Seven O's across the board. How about that? At this time, we'll move on to a management report from our county manager, Ms. Postock Ferguson.
Chairman and Commissioners, good morning. I have two items for you this morning. The first, I would like Department of Emergency Services Joe Folsom to come forward and Brent Smirnoff from our Communications Department and Engagement Department. There's a collaboration on drowning prevention communications that you've probably seen in social media recently or on the news. But it was a collaboration of four departments that included Communications and Engagement, Department of Emergency Services, specifically MEDACT, Johnson County Parks and Recreation Department, and Department of Health and Environment. So, please come forward and give us an update. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Joe Folsom with MEDACT. I wanted to take a minute to recognize Bren with the Communications Office, Kevin with the Department of Health and Environment. And we had Marshall from Parks and Rec, but he was unable to be here today. So, we have Shannon, who's from Parks and Rec. This campaign could not have been successful without input from all of them. It came to our attention at MEDACT that we had a sharp increase in the number of drownings so far, up until about the beginning of July. And it came to our attention, just because crews notify us when these bad calls happen. Unfortunately, we would like to start off by saying we do extend our condolences and our thoughts. We do have, we did have one fatality that was reported in the news due to a drowning in the county so far this summer. And we also have one patient that is in extended hospital stay because of their drowning incident. These incidents all, we encountered patients between the ages of two and 17 years old. And they ran the gamut between homeowners' association pools, city or county facilities, as well as backyard pools. So, together with this team, we developed a social media campaign. You may have seen Battalion Chief Drew Heisel. He was our face in the media. He did interviews with all major news outlets in the county. And I am proud to announce that since this campaign kicked off, July 11th was when we made our big media push, there have now been zero drowning calls in the county since that time. So.
Joe, thank you very much for the presentation, and congratulations to the entire team. Thank you. Incredible work. We saw this organically, whether it be on TV or on social media. And so, we know that it was getting out there. I'd also like to reflect on this being a board priority. Strategic communication. How we, to take a phrase, I like it, Commissioner Brewer, show up. Whether it be for our communities at events, or whether it be in a traditional media channel or on social media, that impacts people's lives. And so, being able to get good information in a way that is engaging in a time when attention is the most valuable commodity that there is, it's something I'm glad we're focused on. And I'm glad we have great people to work with to help engage, inform, and protect. So, congratulations to the entire team. Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm going to echo what the Chair said. And he made a statement earlier about how safety is the most important thing when we were talking about video. You know, we just lost an officer not very long, I think it was on Tuesday when they had his funeral. Just a random call, you know. And so, our MEDACT and Sheriff's Department, all the first responders are a priority. And I agree with Commissioner Brewer, just show up. And we all need to show up. And I really appreciate Johnson County Parks and Rec and all the partnerships. You guys are everywhere, from JCDS to, I mean, you're just everywhere partnering, and that shows in the community. So, thank you for all your efforts. And Chair, thank you for making it a priority.
Thank you, everybody, for making it a priority, yes. Further report?
Yes, thank you for being here this morning. Speaking of communications, we have another thing to highlight, and that's the Wastewater newly launched newsletter. So, I'll ask Susan Pecaric and Ms. Reeves to come forward and highlight that. You have a copy of kind of the one-page or front and back of what it looks like. And what I noticed is it's very simple and easy, quick glance. I'm assuming that's part of the strategy, but please share us a few highlights.
Yeah, thank you. So, we decided to start a customer newsletter that has evergreen content. And at this time, it's starting basically twice a year, summer and a winter. Customers can see it obviously on social media. It goes to a webpage that has the links, it has the information. I'm able to track engagement as far as like, are they taking people to our website? Are they increasing phone calls? How are they utilizing this information? And then come this winter, there'll be another one that has a focus on things that are maybe a bit more winter-focused, like holiday cooking and fog and things like that. So, it's critical that the information, it is simple. They're not overwhelmed with the ton of things they have to try to keep track of and that they find benefit in it. So, we can adjust accordingly if we're getting feedback from customers, if there's more different information that they'd like. And I just look forward to seeing the public feedback from it.
Thank you. And it looks like there's a comment.
Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Chair. I don't know who designed the newsletter, but whoever did did a great job. You did a great job.
Thank you.
Because it's very not real wordy, and you covered several points. And I was looking at the skillet with the eggs. On a high-protein diet, you've got the eggs and a little bit of lettuce in there, Commissioner Myers, with protein and whole wheat bread. So, I don't know what restaurant that came from, but I want to point out. I just, I thank you for your work, because this is just, I think this is something, I feel like this is something that we've all been looking for. So, I really appreciate your work and the whole team.
Thank you very much. And customers will start seeing when they get their digital notification of their bill. And that email, at the very bottom, there'll be a link to check out our summer newsletter. And so, that way, we're not sending them additional emails on top of everything they already get. So, they can choose to click on that and read that. And so, it kind of cuts down a little bit on the email noise, but they still have access to the information.
Melissa, thank you for being here.
Comment. Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you. I just want to ask, so, for those folks who still do receive a paper bill, will there be a paper copy in their bill?
So, what we're planning to do is put information in their paper bill that lets them know that it's available. They can go to our website, and they can log on to view it if they're interested.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here. I appreciate your creativity. You continue to bring things forward that helps get the word out about the great things that Wastewater does. So, thank you.
Thank you.
For being here this morning. And Chairman, that concludes my report.
Very good. We'll move on then to Commissioner comments. Start today with Commissioner Allen Brand.
Thank you, Chair. And I'm not going to steal Commissioner Fast's thunder, so I'll let her talk about what she put together. But I want to thank you for pulling together the exploratory farm tour recommend. I'm not going to go into it. You know, you went through extra lengths of pulling everybody there. It was very informational. I'll let you talk about it. So, I just wanted to thank you for doing that. Also, I attended ribbon cutting yesterday, another hanger from KC AC. They are looking forward to hopefully building another hanger. So, I just want to again say hats off to the airport for the professionalism and just seeing and, you know, I was, anyway, thank you to Legal as well for, you know, just getting all the leases updated. And it's not been easy, because it's hard to make everybody happy. Again, I want to just say thank you. Every week, I get calls from DMV, you know, about the need of enough help out there. And I, but I do want to say that when I do get complaints, they always handle them. And when people call, in fact, a gentleman called me back yesterday and appreciated, because there's always a follow-up. He said, even though they can't get you in and the lines are full, the employees are all very nice. So, that was good to hear. And I also want to thank Charmaine and Grace for all the work that they've done on the appointments and all the bylaws. And, you know, that's quite the undertaking. And sometimes, it just always, you know, trying to get everything right, it takes a while. So, I just appreciate, because it just seems like now it's going a lot smoother. But that was a lot to do. So, I really appreciate all the work. I know we all do up here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fast.
Yes. So, Dennis Patton, our former Extension Director, who I call the Taylor Swift of Extension Services. Before he died, I met with him about having a farm tour. Douglas County and Miami County have very successful agriculture business farm tours that include garden tours. And how could Johnson County do this with the World Cup coming? What a great time to, you know, market our master gardens, demonstration projects. We have the most master gardeners in the region, in the state, very successful demonstration gardens. Also, to highlight our 4H, our goat projects, our rabbits, and then the mini agritourism, our wineries, our lavender farm in rural area, and also our sustainability projects. And so, I brought together Brian Alferman, Zach, who's the head of the Kansas City Agrum Business Council Farm Bureau, Josh from Transit, Beau from World Cup, and our Extension individuals, our 4H, our master garden, our naturalists. And so, could we do a farm tour garden, farm and garden and sustainability, and also the parks? Because Parks does all this great work with bridging the gap. They have volunteers going out to get seeds, to expand our prairies. They also have a country school, you know, Lanesboro. And so, just some great stops. So, you know, with such a short time to the World Cup, the conversation went, how can we, you know, for the future, expand with Miami and the Cobb Valley Farm Tour to include more Johnson County sites? But how could we then create a map, a self-driving tour to some of these, you know, to our gardens in our county, to our agrum tourism sites? So, that came out of it. Also, you know, the possibility, maybe there's some private van people that could take people out. And also then, the really cool idea that came out of, you know, we're paying to have, you know, these, well, we're counties helping funding JCPRD at Theater in the Park to have these watch parties. And perhaps all these agrum businesses, our gardens, our sustainability, I'd love to see, you know, Zip-a-Glass, the composting, KC Can Composting, they could have a Country Fair Day where all the people will be watching the World Cup. So, introduce them to the other agrum tourism sites or gardens, so they, on their next day, can go out and see our master gardens, or can go out to KC Winery. So, our Extension Service is going to work in Douglas County. The Extension Service is in charge of the farm tour. So, they're going to connect, how can we have maybe a regional farm tour and connect with parks? And how can we maximize those World Cup watch days and highlight some of these, you know, really gems of our county? We have these incredible master gardeners. The backyard gardens, it's with this K-State Reach Center, which is at the Sunflower Ambunition Plant. KC, our research, county research is taking over Johnson County Community College, their food forests. They also have big farm production at Johnson County Community College. So, just so, we have a lot of gems that nobody knows about. And so, how do we, you know, going forth, get these gems out to the public? And how do we highlight it to the World Cup? My family was a part of an international 4H group. So, we had many international visitors to our farm, and many of my neighbors then wanted to be a part of it. And farm families don't promote themselves, but they love to share. And I saw so many people, even from inner-city Chicago, that just loved to come out and walk in a cornfield, something as simple as that. So, that was my idea, and I thought we had some great conversations. And I'm hoping that, you know, some more collaboration happens after it.
Thank you. Commissioner Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Mr. Chairman, over the years from this dais, we've acknowledged special events, celebrations, birthdays, activities. But I came across a new one yesterday, one that I think we should really internalize and recognize annually. Yesterday happened to be National Filet Mignon Day.
So young.
I don't know how I'd missed that. So, that's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Myers.
Your report.
Commissioner Brewer.
I thought for sure, Commissioner Ashcraft, that what you were going to recognize that happened yesterday, that certainly was on the radar of myself and other people who share this particular attribute of who they are, is yesterday was National Left-handers' Day.
Oh, that's true.
Anyway.
All 17% of you worldwide.
That's fine. We're small but mighty. Just a couple highlights. I too was happy to see KC AC as they celebrated their hangar opening. One of the things that I noted at yesterday's event is they had a number of speakers from their staff, and just really the pride they have taken in the quality of their organization and the growth of their organization, and really the thankfulness of their staff, and quite frankly, the community collaboration that resulted in the new hangar. Also, had an opportunity to attend the Fire District One Board Meeting this week. And always very proud of our role as election, doing the election certification. So, this week, we were certifying the one primary that took place in Johnson County during this year's primary season. And during that meeting, you know, an important reminder, after this election year, going forward, for those who choose and need to use a mail-in ballot, that three-day grace period will be disappearing, meaning that you really need to make sure that that ballot is in the mail as early as possible, because that's the uncontrollable part, is once you put it in the mail, how long it takes to get to the election office. And there will no longer be a grace period for that to happen. Also, had the opportunity to celebrate and hear from the new Johnson County Community College President, Tony Misca, and his wife, Deb. So, I'm excited to see a very important educational institution in our community, you know, celebrate and start a new chapter with a new head of the community college. That is it for me.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two items I wanted to mention. First of all, on Monday, I had the opportunity to speak to the Missouri, Iowa, Nebraska, Kansas Public Health Association Meeting, MINC for short. And I really appreciated that opportunity. Thank you, Charlie Hunt, if you're listening. Thank you, Charlie Hunt, if you're listening, because our public health officials and staff are, have faced really difficult challenges over the past several years with COVID. Many of them have left the field because of the challenges. And now they're facing funding cuts to important programs. And these are people who are passionate about public health. And so it was a privilege to speak to them and to try to provide them with a voice of encouragement and appreciation for what they do, and to thank them for continuing in the face of these challenges. Secondly, yesterday, I'm privileged to serve as the liaison to the Commission on Aging. And we had our monthly meeting yesterday. They are working on putting together their legislative priorities to present to the board. I'm not anticipating any major changes. Of course, the property tax relief programs at the state are, continue to be concerned because of the limitations on how many people can access that, qualify for those programs. They were, expressed gratitude to this board for approving the area aging plan that will allow them to continue to be funded through federal funding. Of course, at this point, we're still waiting to hear what happens with the Older Americans Act. So, oh, I did want to mention two things in regard to the Commission on Aging. On August 28th is the Live Well, Age Well Conference at the Johnson County Arts and Heritage Center from 10:00 to 3:00. There's all kinds of information and activity for our older adults. Unfortunately, it's on a Thursday, so we can't attend. And then also, next Tuesday, August 19th, there is a caregiver support event that will focus on the challenges of decision-making and the importance of knowing when and how to ask for help. That's from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Johnson County North offices. And if you go to the area, on Area Agency on Aging website, you can sign up for that. And I'm going to try to participate. I think, as I mentioned, I was just down in Florida trying to assist my 86-year-old mom with some health challenges, and it really gave me a perspective on how hard it is when you're a caregiver trying to find the information or resources you need, especially when it's in a place you don't even live there. So I'm really grateful to our Commission on Aging for these services. Thank you.
Without a doubt, we appreciate their work. I'd like to remind everybody that there is a great opportunity to really show Kansas City and Johnson County hospitality through being a volunteer for the FIFA 2026 World Cup. There's some amazing opportunities to help, whether it be as a translator or at the stadium on game day. We will need several thousand volunteers to showcase our region to the world. The calls for volunteers actually ends on September 15th. And I know that's relatively quickly, but every volunteer will be vetted by FIFA, will be trained, will be interviewed, and will be handsomely rewarded with some great FIFA swag, opportunities for potentially tickets. And so I really encourage folks who have a few hours to spare to consider joining us for that effort. You can go to kansascityfwc26.com to sign up for the possibility of volunteering, and please do so by September 15th. Really quickly, to Commissioner Ashcraft and Commissioner Brewer's point, I'm glad we can have a little fun with superlative days, whether it be filet mignons, which I prefer Kansas City strips, or Left-Handers' Day. Among the masses are right-handed, but, you know, the rationale for these days, yes, are to celebrate good things, but it's also to call awareness. And so I do want to call awareness to one, which is coming up on Tuesday, and not to be somber about it, but because we are in a place of influence, being elected officials, albeit at the local level, that it's important, and that's World Humanitarian Day. World Humanitarian Day is celebrated on August 19th, and we are all in debt to the service of those who risk their lives to go into conflict zones to try to save lives, to provide food and medical care. And it's not an easy job. It's a very dangerous job. In fact, in 2024 alone, 380 humanitarian workers across the world were killed, 200 in Gaza alone. And there is surely need around the world today. There's any number of stats that you can point to. The one that I found really impactful is that one in five kids, one of five kids globally, live in or are actively fleeing a conflict zone. We need to be there for the children of the world. Aid is shrinking, need is growing. And being in a position where we can highlight this by recognizing a day and by advocating to our fellow elected officials at the federal level, it's a place, a privilege to be in. So I remind us of that day. I think, I thank all humanitarian workers across the world for their courage, and I encourage everybody to advocate on their behalf and for reinstatement of international aid from the United States. We have a request for an executive session today. We do also have an agenda review, and then committees of the whole beginning at 1:00 to discuss our fire districts. For now, we are going to recess this meeting, take a brief break until 11:30, and then come back. We'll have our agenda review first, followed by an executive session, eventually followed by committees of the whole. So absent objection from any board member, we are in recess.